Good evening. It's a joy to call this special session of the Johnston County Board of Education meeting to order. Ms. Dance, we have all board members present. We will begin tonight with an invocation by Kevin Donovan and our Pledge of Allegiance led by Kay Carroll.
Heavenly Father, thank you for gathering us safely on such a wet afternoon. As we meet on the business of board, please grant us the wisdom to make decisions that will glorify you, that we manage your money wisely to make a positive impact on our staff and students. Lord, I also pray that if there is someone within earshot of my voice that doesn't know you, that they come to know you through Jesus Christ. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inhales deeply) Good night, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I will entertain a motion in just a second to go into closed session. We will go into closed session here at the beginning and then we will come back into open session, but we just need to handle some other business. So I will now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, I move that we enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 1, 3, 5, and 6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115C, 321 to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee and to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney and client privilege.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Donovan. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of going into closed session, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are now in closed session. (Music) Good evening. It's a joy to call this special session of the Johnston County Board of Education meeting to order. Ms. Dance, we have all board members present. We will begin tonight with an invocation by Kevin Donovan and our Pledge of Allegiance led by Kay Carroll.
Heavenly Father, thank you for gathering us safely on such a wet afternoon. As we meet on the business of board, please grant us the wisdom to make decisions that will glorify you, that we manage your money wisely to make a positive impact on our staff and students. Lord, I also pray that if there is someone within earshot of my voice that doesn't know you, that they come to know you through Jesus Christ. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inhales deeply) Good night, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I will entertain a motion in just a second to go into closed session. We will go into closed session here at the beginning and then we will come back into open session, but we just need to handle some other business. So I will now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, I move that we enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 1, 3, 5, and 6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115C, 321 to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee and to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney and client privilege.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Donovan. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of going into closed session, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are now in closed session. (Music)
Hello, Johnston County families. I'm Paige Barnes, Executive Director of Elementary Education, and I'm excited to share with you some important updates to our elementary grading practices beginning this year in the 2025-2026 school year. These changes are the result of thoughtful feedback from parents, guardians, educators, and students across our community. We're making updates to ensure that grades are clear, fair, and meaningful so everyone understands how our students are learning and growing. We heard from many of you that grading could be confusing or inconsistent, especially when students move between grade levels or schools. So we're simplifying and aligning our grading system to bring transparency so you can clearly understand your students' progress, consistency across all elementary schools, and clarity for students and families. Grades should be like mile markers along the journey of learning, not just a final score. They help us see where students are and how we can support them. Let's break down the updates by grade level. For grades K-2, we'll continue using standard space grading, but students will now receive a numerical indicator from 1 to 4. 1 stands for little to no mastery. 2 stands for partial mastery. 3 stands for meeting expectations or mastery. And 4 is for advanced understanding. Please note that students have met grade level expectations at a Level 3. This would correlate with what we used to indicate with an M. A Level 4 goes beyond mastery to more advanced understanding while remaining focused on grade level standards. For grades K through 2, teachers will use classroom observations, student work, and short assessments to determine whether students are progressing toward their learning goals. Student progress will be measured based on end-of-year expectations. Although students may not receive all instruction necessary to meet a full standard within quarters 1 and 2, it is possible for some students to earn a 3 or 4 through enrichment opportunities or evidence that references the full standard. Comments will be available in Infinite Campus to express if a standard has not yet been fully taught. This is an example of a second-grade math proficiency scale. Your students' report card will show an indicator for the cluster titled "Use Place Value Understanding and Properties." The proficiency scale shows you which three standards are part of that cluster and what skills your students should be able to do in order to earn a 1, 2, 3, or 4. You can access all proficiency scales along with other useful resources in the elementary school curriculum page of our district website. For grades 3 through 5, we're transitioning to a more familiar 10-point grading scale. An A represents 90 to 100. A B represents 80 to 89. A C represents 70 to 79. A D represents 60 to 69. And an F is anything below a 60. This shift gives students and families a clearer picture of academic performance while still honoring what students are learning. Enhancements like art, music, PE, and STEM will use a three-level scale that focuses on how well students are mastering the standards, not on participation, effort, or behavior. We're committed to keeping you informed. You'll continue to receive regular updates through Infinite Campus, our online parent portal, work sent home in student folders, and progress reports in report cards. During the first quarter, instead of a typical progress report, you'll receive assessment data to give you an early snapshot of your child's learning. Behind the scenes, teachers and principals are receiving ongoing training to make sure these changes are applied consistently and fairly across all our schools. We have a living, frequently asked questions document that will help you see what questions have already been asked or you can ask your own. We are excited to partner with you as we work to make our processes and procedures for evaluation of student learning effective and easy to understand. We're proud of these updates and what they mean for our students. Grades should support learning, not limit it. These changes will help ensure that every grade your child receives is a true reflection of what they know and can do. If you have questions, we encourage you to reach out to your school. We're all in this together, and we thank you for your continued support. Together, we're building a future for our kids. Thank you for being a part of the JCPS family.
Hola, familias del condado de Johnston. Este mensaje es de parte de Paige Barnes, directora ejecutiva de educación primaria, y me complace compartir con ustedes algunas actualizaciones importantes sobre nuestras prácticas de calificación en la escuela primaria que entrarán en vigor a partir del año escolar 2025-2026. Estos cambios son el resultado de los comentarios reflexivos de los padres, tutores, educadores, y estudiantes a través de nuestra comunidad. Estamos haciendo actualizaciones para asegurar que las calificaciones sean claras, justas, y significativas para que todos comprendan cómo nuestros estudiantes están aprendiendo y creciendo. Muchos de ustedes nos han comentado que la calificación puede resultar confusa o inconsistente, especialmente cuando los estudiantes cambian de grado o de escuela. Por esa razón, estamos simplificando y alineando nuestro sistema de calificaciones para brindar transparencia, para que puedan comprender claramente el progreso de sus estudiantes, consistencia en todas las escuelas primarias, claridad para los estudiantes y las familias. Las calificaciones deben ser como marcadores de millas a lo largo del viaje del aprendizaje, no solo una puntuación final. Nos ayudan a identificar en qué punto se encuentran los estudiantes y cómo podemos apoyarlos. Analicemos las actualizaciones por nivel de grado. Para los grados kinder a segundo, seguiremos utilizando la calificación basada en estándares, pero ahora los estudiantes recibirán un indicador numérico del 1 al 4. 1 indica poco o ningún dominio. 2 indica dominio parcial. 3 indica alcanza las expectativas, dominio. 4 indica conocimiento avanzado. Tenga en cuenta que los estudiantes han cumplido las expectativas del nivel de grado en un nivel 3. Esto sería equivalente a los que solíamos indicar con una M. Un nivel 4 va más allá del dominio y alcanza una comprensión más avanzada, al mismo tiempo que se mantiene enfocado en los estándares de nivel de grado. Para los grados kinder a segundo, los maestros utilizarán observaciones en clase, trabajos estudiantiles, y evaluaciones breves para determinar si los estudiantes están progresando hacia sus metas de aprendizaje. El progreso estudiantil se medirá con base en las expectativas de fin de año. Aunque es posible que los estudiantes no reciban toda la instrucción necesaria para cumplir con un estándar completo en los trimestres 1 y 2, algunos estudiantes pueden obtener un 3 o un 4 a través de oportunidades de enriquecimiento o evidencias que hagan referencia al estándar completo. Los comentarios estarán disponibles en Infinite Campus para expresar si un estándar aún no se ha enseñado por completo. Este es un ejemplo de una escala de competencia matemática de segundo grado. El boletín de calificaciones de su estudiante mostrará un indicador para el grupo titulado "Usar la comprensión del valor posicional y las propiedades de las operaciones." La escala de competencia le muestra cuáles son las tres estándares que forman parte de ese grupo y que las habilidades debe ser capaz de realizar su estudiante para obtener un 1, 2, 3, o 4. Puede acceder a todas las escalas de competencia junto con otros recursos útiles en la página del Plan de Estudios de las Escuelas Primarias de la página web de nuestro distrito. Para los grados tercero a quinto, estamos haciendo la transición de una escala de calificación más familiar de 10 puntos. A indica 90% a 100%. B indica 80% al 89%. C indica 70% al 79%. D indica 60% al 69%. F indica que está menos del 60%. Este cambio ofrece a los estudiantes y a las familias una imagen más clara del rendimiento académico sin dejar de valorar lo que los estudiantes están aprendiendo. Las clases de enriquecimiento como arte, música, educación física, y STEM utilizarán una escala de tres niveles que se enfoca en cómo los estudiantes están dominando los estándares, no en la participación, el esfuerzo, o el comportamiento. Nos comprometemos a mantenerlos informados. Seguirá recibiendo actualizaciones frecuentes a través de Infinite Campus, nuestro portal para padres en línea, trabajo enviado a casa en la carpeta de los estudiantes, reportes de progreso, y boletas de calificación. Durante el primer trimestre, en lugar del típico informe de progreso, recibirá datos de evaluación que le permitirán conocer con anticipación el nivel de aprendizaje de su hijo. Y detrás de las cámaras, los maestros y directores reciben capacitación continua para garantizar que estos cambios se apliquen en manera consistente y justa en todas nuestras escuelas. Contamos con un documento de preguntas frecuentes en vivo que te ayudará a ver las preguntas que ya se han hecho. Contamos con un documento de preguntas frecuentes en vivo que te ayudará a ver las preguntas que ya se han hecho o puedes hacer tus propias preguntas. Nos complace colaborar contigo para que nuestros procesos y procedimientos de evaluación del aprendizaje estudiantil sea eficaz y fácil de entender. Estamos orgullosos de estas actualizaciones y de lo que significan para nuestros estudiantes. Las calificaciones deben apoyar el aprendizaje, no limitarlo. Estos cambios ayudarán a garantizar que cada calificación que reciba su hijo sea un reflejo fiel de lo que entiende y puede hacer. Si tiene alguna pregunta, le recomendamos que se comunique con su escuela. Estamos todos juntos en esto y le agradecemos su apoyo continuo. Juntos estamos construyendo un futuro mejor para nuestros hijos. Gracias por formar parte de la familia JCPS.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where innovation meets excellence and every student is inspired to soar. With over 37,000 students and more than 5,000 dedicated professionals, we are more than just a school district. We are a family, a vibrant, growing, diverse community with one clear goal: academic excellence. Our North Star: student proficiency and academic growth. And by staying true to this vision, Johnston County Public Schools has earned district-wide recognition for excellence. As our population grows, so does our commitment. With the help of our Board of Commissioners and dedicated stakeholders, we're building new schools, modernizing facilities, and creating innovative learning environments designed for 21st century success. This is a community-wide effort, a partnership built on trust, collaboration, and a shared vision for the future. At Johnston County Public Schools, we believe that every student deserves the opportunity to thrive, in the classroom and in life. And every educator and employee deserves a career where they can grow and make an impact. We are Johnston County Public Schools, united in purpose and committed to excellence. Join us as we build the future, one student at a time. (Music)
Hello Johnston County families. I'm Paige Barnes, Executive Director of Elementary Education, and I'm excited to share with you some important updates to our elementary grading practices beginning this year in the 2025-2026 school year. These changes are the result of thoughtful feedback from parents, guardians, educators, and students across our community. We're making updates to ensure that grades are clear, fair, and meaningful, so everyone understands how our students are learning and growing. We heard from many of you that grading could be confusing or inconsistent, especially when students move between grade levels or schools. So we're simplifying and aligning our grading system to bring transparency so you can clearly understand your students' progress, consistency across all elementary schools, and clarity for students and families. Grades should be like mile markers along the journey of learning, not just a final score. They help us see where students are and how we can support them. Let's break down the updates by grade level. For grades K-2, we'll continue using standard-based grading, but students will now receive a numerical indicator from 1 to 4. 1 stands for little to no mastery. 2 stands for partial mastery. 3 stands for meeting expectations or mastery. And 4 is for advanced understanding. Please note that students have met grade-level expectations at a Level 3. This would correlate with what we used to indicate with an M. A Level 4 goes beyond mastery to more advanced understanding while remaining focused on grade-level standards. For grades K-2, teachers will use classroom observations, student work, and short assessments to determine whether students are progressing toward their learning goals. Student progress will be measured based on end-of-year expectations. Although students may not receive all instruction necessary to meet a full standard within Quarters 1 and 2, it is possible for some students to earn a 3 or 4 through enrichment opportunities or evidence that references the full standard. Comments will be available in Infinite Campus to express if a standard has not yet been fully taught. This is an example of a second-grade math proficiency scale. Your students' report card will show an indicator for the cluster titled "Use Place Value Understanding and Properties." The proficiency scale shows you which three standards are part of that cluster and what skills your students should be able to do in order to earn a 1, 2, 3, or 4. You can access all proficiency scales along with other useful resources in the Elementary School Curriculum page of our district website. For grades 3 through 5, we're transitioning to a more familiar 10-point grading scale. An A represents 90 to 100. A B represents 80 to 89. A C represents 70 to 79. A D represents 60 to 69. And an F is anything below a 60. This shift gives students and families a clearer picture of academic performance while still honoring what students are learning. Enhancements like art, music, PE, and STEM will use a three-level scale that focuses on how well students are mastering the standards, not on participation, effort, or behavior. We're committed to keeping you informed. You'll continue to receive regular updates through Infinite Campus, our online parent portal, work sent home in student folders, and progress reports in report cards. During the first quarter, instead of a typical progress report, you'll receive assessment data to give you an early snapshot of your child's learning. Behind the scenes, teachers and principals are receiving ongoing training to make sure these changes are applied consistently and fairly across all our schools. We have a living, frequently-asked questions document that will help you see what questions have already been asked, or you can ask your own. We are excited to partner with you as we work to make our processes and procedures for evaluation of student learning effective and easy to understand. We're proud of these updates and what they mean for our students. Grades should support learning, not limit it. These changes will help ensure that every grade your child receives is a true reflection of what they know and can do. If you have questions, we encourage you to reach out to your school. We're all in this together, and we thank you for your continued support. Together, we're building a future for our kids. Thank you for being a part of the JCPS family.
Hola familias del condado de Johnston. Este mensaje es de parte de Paige Barnes, directora ejecutiva de educación primaria, y me complace compartir con ustedes algunas actualizaciones importantes sobre nuestras prácticas de calificación en la escuela primaria que entrarán en vigor a partir del año escolar 2025-2026. Estos cambios son el resultado de los comentarios reflexivos de los padres, tutores, educadores, y estudiantes a través de nuestra comunidad. Estamos haciendo actualizaciones para asegurar que las calificaciones sean claras, justas, y significativas para que todos comprendan cómo nuestros estudiantes están aprendiendo y creciendo. Muchos de ustedes nos han comentado que la calificación puede resultar confusa o inconsistente, especialmente cuando los estudiantes cambian de grado o de escuela. Por esa razón, estamos simplificando y alineando nuestro sistema de calificaciones para brindar transparencia, para que puedan comprender claramente el progreso de sus estudiantes; consistencia en todas las escuelas primarias; claridad para los estudiantes y las familias. Las calificaciones deben ser como marcadores de millas a lo largo del viaje del aprendizaje, no solo una puntuación final. Nos ayudan a identificar en qué punto se encuentran los estudiantes y cómo podemos apoyarlos. Analicemos las actualizaciones por nivel de grado. Para los grados Kinder a Segundo, seguiremos utilizando la calificación basada en estándares, pero ahora los estudiantes recibirán un indicador numérico del 1 al 4. 1 indica poco o ningún dominio. 2 indica dominio parcial. 3 indica alcanza las expectativas, dominio. 4 indica conocimiento avanzado. Tenga en cuenta que los estudiantes han cumplido las expectativas del nivel de grado en un nivel 3. Esto sería equivalente a los que solíamos indicar con una M. Un nivel 4 va más allá del dominio y alcanza una comprensión más avanzada, al mismo tiempo que se mantiene enfocado en los estándares de nivel de grado. Para los grados Kinder a Segundo, los maestros utilizarán observaciones en clase, trabajos estudiantiles, y evaluaciones breves para determinar si los estudiantes están progresando hacia sus metas de aprendizaje. El progreso estudiantil se medirá con base en las expectativas de fin de año. Aunque es posible que los estudiantes no reciban toda la instrucción necesaria para cumplir con un estándar completo en los trimestres 1 y 2, algunos estudiantes pueden obtener un 3 o un 4 a través de oportunidades de enriquecimiento o evidencias que hagan referencia al estándar completo. Los comentarios estarán disponibles en Infinite Campus para expresar si un estándar aún no se ha enseñado por completo. Este es un ejemplo de una escala de competencia matemática de segundo grado. El boletín de calificaciones de su estudiante mostrará un indicador para el grupo titulado "Usar la comprensión del valor posicional y las propiedades de las operaciones". La escala de competencia le muestra cuáles son las tres estándares que forman parte de ese grupo y que las habilidades debe ser capaz de realizar su estudiante para obtener un 1, 2, 3, o 4. Puede acceder a todas las escalas de competencia junto con otros recursos útiles en la página del Plan de Estudios de las Escuelas Primarias de la página web de nuestro distrito. Para los grados tercero a quinto, estamos haciendo la transición de una escala de calificación más familiar de 10 puntos. A indica 90% a 100%. B indica 80% al 89%. C indica 70% al 79%. D indica 60% al 69%. F indica que está menos del 60%. Este cambio ofrece a los estudiantes y a las familias una imagen más clara del rendimiento académico sin dejar de valorar lo que los estudiantes están aprendiendo. Las clases de enriquecimiento como arte, música, educación física, y STEM utilizarán una escala de tres niveles que se enfoca en cómo los estudiantes están dominando los estándares, no en la participación, el esfuerzo, o el comportamiento. Nos comprometemos a mantenerlos informados. Seguirá recibiendo actualizaciones frecuentes a través de Infinite Campus, nuestro portal para padres en línea, trabajo enviado a casa en la carpeta.
Welcome back. We appreciate your patience. This is an exciting night, and I'm going to begin this presentation. I'm gonna call on Marty Moser, the president of Barnhill, to begin this presentation and this information.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Andrews, and thank you the entire board for having us here this evening. Again, my name's Marty Moser. I'm the president of Barnhill Building Group. And we're here to present to you the guaranteed maximum price proposal for the rebuild of Clayton High School. We were selected as the design-build firm on February the 11th and went into a very quick 60-day sprint of assessing the site, the existing facilities, looking at options for layout of the site, and came back on April the 8th to the board and presented two options for the site plan. Option 2 was selected, and since then, we've been engaged in Phase 2 of the design-build phase of the project. We have advanced that phase from those very high-level drawings to currently we have 740 sheets of construction documents, about 1,000 to 1,500 pages of specifications, and we've taken that out in early September for pricing to the subcontractor trade market. And what we're gonna show you here tonight is the result of that and also where the design currently sits. A little bit of a reminder of kind of what option 2 was, but we're gonna show you some more images and some more technical information on that. But to do that, I'm gonna introduce Eric Miller. Eric is director, I mean, pre-construction manager for Barnhill, and he'll walk through the entire slide deck and the cost information with you all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Let's see. There we go. So to start off with the design of Clayton High School, this is the site plan. Moving from right to left, you'll see item number 1 is the new building. Behind that will be the staff parking lot. Moving from right to left, item 3 is the parking for visitors. Then you have the existing baseball field. To the left of that is the existing soccer and lacrosse field. There will be the replacement of the existing baseball press box. Moving south from the soccer and lacrosse field, there'll be a new storage building behind the football field. To the right of that building is the existing field house. Moving further south is the football field, and then down to the bottom fields to the left, you'll have a new practice field with track and field amenities. To the right of that, the new softball field with the new softball building and press box. To the right of that, tennis courts. Above that would be the student parking and the bus drop-off loop. There we go. Here are a couple renderings. The first, the top one is of the main entry, and the bottom is of the rear entry from the staff parking lot. This is the main floor plan. To the right, you have the auditorium block. Next, going to the left, is the sort of athletics area with the main gym and auxiliary gym. Left that is the dining in pink with administrative in yellow, and then the classroom tower is below that. Second level, you'll have in the green will be the media center and library with some additional administrative space in yellow above that, and then the second level of the classroom tower. This is the third level of the classroom tower, which is a repeat of the second level. Here are some renderings. This would be the main entry coming into the school. This is the dining facility. Notice there's the comet marker where we're salvaging part of the existing basketball court as a sort of focal point of the dining area. This is the staff lobby entry. The main gym, the auxiliary gym. This is the auditorium lobby/entry. The parking would be to the left and the auditorium to the right. It's a view of the auditorium looking from the back, and a large view of the auditorium looking from the back. Auditorium looking from the stage. This is the media center. Large view of that, and another perspective of the new media center. Phasing, so this will be a two-phase project. Starting from the right, we'll be capturing the far-right-hand side of the site where the new school will get built while the existing school maintains occupancy. Once that's complete, we'll then occupy the new school and then complete the demolition of the remaining school and complete the existing fields and softball building. Some key dates: the final GMP was established on October 17th. We have a notice proceed date to start on October, or excuse me, December 16th. Phase 1 construction, home grandstands will be installed starting in December and finishing in May. The main building will be complete at the end of 2027, and the existing gym will be demoed from March to July in 2026 to provide temporary parking. And then construction in Phase 2 will begin January 2028 and end August 2028. And so, as Marty mentioned, Phase 1, early design, was completed. That was our initial contract of $390,000. Then we moved on to Phase 2, which we're completing now as an amendment to that, at $4,489,320. And now we're looking to complete the project through permitting and construction at $121,501,806 for a guaranteed maximum price total of $126,381,316. JCP direct costs are $8 million for a total project cost of $134,381,316. Previously funded, and that was $5 million, which leaves a total remaining to be funded of $129,381,316. Thank you.
Board members, at this time, it is my recommendation that you approve the final project cost of Clayton High School in the amount of $134,381,316, pending the approval by the Board of Commissioners and the local government commission. This request will be submitted to the county commissioners for their approval of the additional balance of $129,381,316.
Do I entertain a motion for approval of this request?
Madam Chair, based on the superintendent's recommendation and information presented to the Board of Education, I move that the Johnson County Board of Education request the additional balance of $129,381,316 from the Johnson County Board of Commissioners to complete the Johnson, I mean, Clayton High School construction project pending the approval of local government commission and the Johnson County Board of Commissioners.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Carroll. Any discussion?
I did have a quick question. I'm new to construction. I'm not in the construction world. I'm in the aerospace world. This is guaranteed maximum pricing, right? Is there anything, is there anything in the contract that says that if tariff changes, if prices go up due to tariffs, that the maximum price could change?
No, there is not. So, it's a fixed price, and we're in fact locking in the subcontractors who are purchasing those materials on a fixed-price basis as well. Any tariff impact has happened from the point in time we got engaged to at this point in time, and once this is engaged, that's our risk, you know, from there forward.
Okay.
Is there a savings clause in the contract that we would get back?
Yes, there is.
Whatever's not paid on that guaranteed maximum price? And would you consent to an audit at the end of the job?
The contract includes that as a provision.
Right, like a full forensic audit of the entire project.
Absolutely. Yeah, we do that frequently with public agencies. Be happy to do that.
Would any changes be made to this project without our knowledge?
No, ma'am.
Okay. How would that?
Any changes that are made?
How would that come to us?
Require a proposal for change that is a detailed-out cost, and that will require signatures from us and from you in order for that to be incorporated in the work and for it to proceed.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that's minor and major changes?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, would there be like a financial cap on, or minimum, or just any changes that are made? Would be made notice of? Just depends?
We don't proceed with changes unless we have authorization from the public agency. Now, I do, I have seen instances where boards will allow staff to enter into changes up to a certain dollar amount, but above that, it has to come to a board. But I don't know what your requirements are for that.
Yeah, we currently operate in the 90,000, so up to 90,000. Anything over 90,000, we'd come to use a board.
Did you just kind of do exercises with your preferred subcontractor? Did you actually put it to the market and actually kind of procure a bids, like a leveled bid sheet?
It's a combination, and I wouldn't call it preferred. It was where we had trades that were working on a design-assist basis under the design-build-delivery methodology that's legislated by the state of North Carolina. So, it wasn't anything that was a preferential treatment. It was someone that had a specific level of expertise that could provide input during the design phase, and, you know, those were trades that were involved in that type of pricing exercise, but there were others that we did put out on a full bid leveling as well.
So, the number that you presented to us tonight, it doesn't necessarily, it isn't a full marketplace number, just based on what you told me? And when I say preferred, of course, do not mean that you had some sort of a weird relationship, a relationship or anything like that. Preferred exactly means exactly what you said, meant the qualifications.
It was not a hard-bid scenario on all the trades. That's correct.
I'm wondering how you're guaranteeing this maximum price without getting a more leveled set of numbers from the market?
I don't know if I understand your question.
So...
Because we have a fixed price from the sub-trades for the work that's here. So, they are guaranteeing it to us, and we're guaranteeing the total complete price.
Every sub has guaranteed their price to you?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Just for conversation's sake, you're guaranteeing to 129. If for any reason some of all that changed that was guaranteed to you, you said y'all...
That's our risk.
All right. I'm assuming the process will be, we wouldn't have a, would it be a smooth process? I mean, is it, when we say bonded or insured, or is that what normally happens in this? Y'all will purchase insurance to cover the overage and?
That's correct.
And we wouldn't have to argue fuss and fight and fume about getting it finished, right?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
And I think that's the concern for a lot of us. We have a guaranteed price. You have a slew of subcontractors. Hypothetically, if this subcontractor goes out of business, are we still going to be guaranteed that price?
Yes, sir.
That same price that was this on here, regardless of what you have to have?
Yes, sir.
And you eat the difference if it's more?
Yes, sir.
We're buying insurance, subcontract default insurance that would cover that, and we're also have a payment and performance bond. We're paying for those items, by the way. They're in the sheet. We're paying for them.
You are correct.
Any other discussion?
I think that, just for the sake of the public, obviously, this project is done differently than other projects that we've done through bonds. This project was actually pulled out of the bond by our county commissioners to do it differently. So, that's why you see a different process to not than you would normally see for Wilson Mills High School, so to speak. And I think the public needs to understand that if they're watching or have any questions, because that's why it's different. It's all taxpayer money. It all comes from the commissioner's checkbook, but it's just a different process for doing it, and that's why we've, that's why we're going down this route. I mean, you know, we just built Wilson Mills High School, or we almost finished Wilson Mills High School, and, you know, we never, you know, it was handled through the board, through the bond, it was through the process of that. We didn't, there wasn't the consultation and the input from the county commissioners and things like that. So, just so the public understands, it's just a different process of getting this job done, and I want to make sure that we're clear on that, because I don't want people from, I don't want their folks from Wilson Mills Community to anybody else to come and say, "Why didn't we do this for that school or for this project or that project?" It's just a different, a different way of a project being funded.
And this is a very similar build to Wilson Mills. Is that correct? So, you will have gone through the process of building the school and working with these people in terms of their understanding, what their costs are, what they're, you know, what they're building, what they're getting into. So, that gives you, I guess, a little more assurance of the costs that you're throwing out.
Correct. High degree of confidence.
Yes, willing to sign. Okay, all right. But I, you know, for me, I think the important thing is, is the fact that this is a project that is being built by your company and your subs right now, so there's going to be a certain amount of experience that you're going to have prior to even starting this project.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I think to the public, to help the public understand this as well, this was property taxes which have increased substantially, not by us, but by the commissioners' decision-making. You're going to notice that your debt service is 11% of your tax bill, and this is going to add on to that debt service unless the commissioners have some fund that they're going to pull this full amount out of, but it doesn't sound like they necessarily do. And I think it would be neglectful of this board not to at least acknowledge the huge, the huge amount of money and taxes that are going to be collected to fund the construction of schools in Johnston County. And the commissioners have really set out to do, to take care of that infrastructure need, and it is a need. And you look at, you look at Clayton High School, and if you haven't been in it in a while, I'd ask that you contact the principal if you want a tour to see what is existing. In 2018, there was a bond passed by the public recognizing a need for an auditorium for these students, that our band students have to walk 3 blocks up to perform, and then they have to try and coordinate schedules, that they can't even have ensembles because they don't have practice rooms, that our theater students don't have production like other high schools do. There's a need, there's a definite need to do something with this high school. I feel almost sick about the amount of money it's going to take to do something, unfortunately, because I know people in this county that are suffering. They are wondering how they're going to pay their taxes, that have doubled. But this is out of our hands. This was directed by the commissioners. The process was directed by the commissioners. This is not how I would have handled this process, but it wasn't our choice. And so, as we move forward, I want to make sure that we are taking care of Clayton High School, because it is our, it is, we are charged as a board to take care of our public schools. If we don't take care of our public schools as we are charged, we neglect our duties. So, I would compel people in the public to reach out to your commissioner if you have an issue with this, and it's basically their baby and how they wanted to fund it and how they wanted to move forward. And I appreciate Barnhill coming to us with such beautiful drawings and doing such a good job, working with the architect and delivering a very fast-paced product to the schools.
Just to follow up on what Ms. Antoine said, I think it was the 2018 bond that the auditorium was there, that it was, it was actually put in the bond for, I think, 6 million, and then it ended up being 12 million cost, and the money wasn't there to do it. And I actually had, I actually led a meeting over there about that. But the point is, I think if you look at this figure, the 12 million that was for that auditorium, for a freestanding auditorium, and I don't want to say you can deduct it from it, but what you can do is look at the numbers and look at the figures, because the, you know, this, this, again, this project is, you know, it's just different. And, but that's, that was one of the key things, again, that we said back, I don't know, a year, a year and a half ago, when we looked at that, and the money wasn't there for that auditorium bond. So, this fulfills the school board's responsibility of what we promised Clayton High School.
Madam Chairman, call to question.
I have a call to question. I'll entertain a second to that.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of...